Via Zoom to convene a public hearing on the following bill, 26233 Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. This hearing is also being streamed on the committee's YouTube channel named EAL Committee. This bill will streamline our ballot access process by establishing a straightforward standard for use by the Board of Elections when evaluating ballot access petitions of candidates, initiative, referendum, and recall campaigns. The current law enumerates many requirements related to petitions, including: the form of the petition and circulator affidavit, the timeline for the release of petitions, and the deadline for submission, the number of signatures required for each type of action, and specific requirements related to signature collection. However, nothing in the law addresses the legality of alterations or changes made to information added by a petition signer to the petition form. This bill will fix this issue by explicitly banning the alteration of information provided by the petition signer after they sign the form. This change will allow for consistent resolution of petition challenges adjudicated by the Board of Elections and streamline the process we use to regulate ballot access in the district. With that, I look forward to hearing from all of our public and government witnesses regarding these important bills, and I ask each to endeavor to keep their remarks to no more than five minutes so that we can hear everyone and have an opportunity to have fruitful dialogue. With that being said, I would like to note that the entire written testimony will be a part of the record. So if you have not submitted your testimony, please email it to seal@dc council.gov. That is C-E-A-L at D C council dot gov. And the hearing record will remain open until Friday, June 27th at 5:00 P. M. I also would like to recognize any of my colleagues. Okay, we have, as you know, at least three hearings going on simultaneously today, so my colleagues may be otherwise disposed. So now we'll turn our agenda to hearing from our public witnesses and receiving their testimony today. And I will start with the first panel as listed. Lisa Rice, CEO of Grow Democracy DC, Anket Jane, the Shadow Senator for the District of Columbia, Chris Furnish, individual, and Adam Ellender, also individual. We'll take your testimony, and we'll start with Ms. Rice.
Good morning, Chairwoman Bonds. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and good morning to you.
Oh, great. Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman Bonds and members of the council. As you know, my name is Lisa Rice, native Washingtonian, former A N C Commissioner, Ward Seven resident, independent voter, and proposer of Initiative 83. I'm dedicated to democracy reform and so proud to lead the charge in my hometown, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I was before this committee last week to ask for your support in fully funding Initiative 83. I'm pleased to return today to support your bill, the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. Chairwoman, you and I have a shared goal: to make the petition process clear. Petitioning is one of the purest forms of democracy in America. Twenty-six states plus the District of Columbia provide for citizen-initiated ballot measures. This process is an essential, important tool in our democracy here and across the nation. It's important that we get this right. The Initiative 83 campaign was full of Washingtonians standing on street corners, talking to our neighbors about how to improve voting. The entire point of petitions is to empower average citizens to change something about their government. Getting on the ballot shouldn't be easy, however, understanding the process should. My firsthand experience with Initiative 83 taught me that the process is burdened with unnecessary vagueness on an issue of vital importance. When a voter makes an error completing the form, what should circulators do to ensure that the intent of the voter will still be heard? We could have easily discarded addresses with air... with air... We could have easily, sorry, discarded those addresses with aired signatures... signatures with aired addresses, sorry about that. We collected several thousand more signatures than needed, even after those signatures were disallowed. But we had an obligation to those voters to ensure their intent was respected. We engaged experts with years of experience collecting signatures for D C elections. They told us that the well-worn practice in the district, spanning multiple elections for candidates and initiatives alike, was to use correction tape to update incorrect non-signature information. So that's what we did. And as your letter introducing this bill indicates, nothing in the law made it clear to me that correction tape would not be acceptable. This is why I support your bill. As a process-oriented person, I crave clear guidance, and your bill would help provide that for future campaigns. Though Initiative 83 easily cleared all hurdles without the voided signatures, I don't want anyone else to have to learn the rules the hard way. I try not to grow resentful at bad faith accusations made against our team, but rather, I've chosen to channel my experiences into productive action. To that end, I'd like to offer three concrete suggestions on how to improve the process, born of the many lingering questions I still have about what is permissible. First, prescribe a precise process for curing errors. I recommend adding a clear prescription in the law on how to cure incorrect addresses or other entries. The edits you propose helpfully indicate that a circulator cannot correct an address, but we still need a clear statement, I think, about what can be done to correct an address. Some signature collections have failure rates as high as 10% for address mismatches, making collection just that more expensive. We should have a clear, easy way to cure. Second, I suggest we ban the use of correction tape. Given that this dispute arose out of the use of correction tape, which we understand was still in use for signature collection for the Ward Eight special election for petitions submitted just last month, I suggest considering an explicit ban on its use in the code. And third, I would suggest we amend your bill to permit implied consent. The current practice is that circulators often complete non-signature fields for the signer. Your edits clarify that this is permissible before the voter signs, as long as it is performed at the voter's request. I suggest that such assistance be allowed with the consent of the signer, rather than at the request of the signer, to more accurately reflect how signature collection actually happens. Circulators taping out... tabling outside of a grocery store, for example, might ask a passing voter for their support and then follow up with questions such as, "Can you share your address?" as they fill out the form. Then they hand the form... the completed form to the signer for their signature. In that scenario, the signer has not requested assistance, but they have given their implied consent. That's a common practice, and it might be inadvertently barred by this bill, and that would be a shame. In closing, I have other insights I'd like to share about improving the petition process. I hope that we can meet and work together toward passage of your bill. Thank you so much for taking up this effort. Our democracy will be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Rice. And I believe we have our Shadow Senator with us, Mr. Jane.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chairwoman Bonds and members of the D C Council. I'm testifying today to generally express support for the bill under consideration, but suggest an amendment to the bill that would better solve the underlying problems the bill is attempting to address. This bill, the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025, appears to have been inspired by the use of Whiteout by Initiative 83 organizers to fix incorrect addresses on petition forms when they were 100% confident that a registered voter had signed the petition but had put an address different than the one they were registered at. It must first be noted that the chairwoman herself, you appear to acknowledge that Initiative 83 was not the first D C campaign to use Whiteout on addresses in petition forms, and that this practice has been restricted... has not been restricted only to ballot initiative campaigns. I agree with Chairwoman Bonds and the co-sponsors of the bill that these actions reveal some fundamental issues with ballot access requirements that the city should correct. But the bill as currently written, while it's helpful in making the rules clearer, it only makes the rules clearer around a fundamentally flawed process, rather than fixing the fundamental flaw. The fundamental problem that this bill is responding to is the use of address to verify someone's identity, and it should be fixed by allowing voters to list their birth date instead of or in addition to their address. The reason that addresses were updated by Initiative 83 and have been updated by campaigns in the past is that people move regularly in this city and often do not update their voter registration. When signing a petition, such voters will write down their current address, even though they are registered to vote at a previous address. These signatures are tossed out by the Board of Elections. Incorrect address is by far the most common reason a signature gets tossed out. The Board of Elections, for example, determined that 10% of the signatures the Unka Jane for Senate campaign submitted to get on the Democratic primary ballot were invalid because the voter was registered but listed at the wrong address. But they listed the wrong address. The Unka Jane for Senate campaign was not an outlier. Numerous candidates are not able to make the ballot simply because of this one error. This leads to a question. If putting a wrong address causes so many signatures to be invalidated, why does the Board of Elections need someone's address in the first place if they already have a signature and a name? The rationale provided is that many people in this city share a name, and the Board of Elections wants to make sure they know who exactly signed a petition. That is a valid goal, but asking for address is not the only way, or in fact, the best way, to verify someone's identity. To ensure B O E knows exactly who signed a petition, while still giving effect to voter intent and making it possible for as many candidates as possible to make the ballot, this committee should amend the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act to require that B O E add a birthdate column to its petition form. The column would be optional, as many people may be uncomfortable providing an address but not a birthdate. If the voter fills out the birthdate column, and the signature would be valid if not for the fact that the voter put the wrong address, then that signature should still count. If a voter's name, signature, and birthdate match one person in the voter file, the board can be 100% certain the voter is who they say they are. The committee could adopt this amendment while keeping in place the helpful existing language clarifying that no aspect of a signature may be touched out of sight of the voter. This would truly address the problems with the signature collection process that the past election revealed. Finally, I want to make sure the committee is aware that its actions have an audience wider than just engaged Washingtonians. Unfortunately, the conversations around this bill have been used by some as a platform to spread inflammatory messages against Initiative 83. The actions of this committee are public, and it is not just D C residents who will be reading the material the committee produces. I ask the committee to ensure that its deliberation over this bill cannot be used by those opposed to D C home rule as fodder for their attempts to repeal Initiative 83 and thwart the wills of... will of Washingtonians who, Democrats and Republicans alike, do not want to see this law overturned by Congress. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. In my day job, I write bills to make elections run better, much like the bill I'm testifying on today, and I would be happy to offer my services free of charge to make my suggested changes if the chairwoman were interested in taking me up on that offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from... Okay, okay, Chris Furnish will take your testimony.
Good afternoon. Thanks for allowing me to speak today. Before I read my testimony, I just want to clarify that Whiteout and correction tape are sometimes used interchangeably, but it was... it was not Whiteout. It was correction tape that was used on petitions for Initiative 83. So, good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds. My name is Chris Furnish. I live in Ward Three. And I'm here today to talk about suggested changes to the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. I myself have collected thousands of signatures on ballot access petitions in D C, Alaska, and Michigan. And unlike D C, the qualifying identifiers used to validate a voter's information on a ballot access petition is the voter's signature and their birth date. People move all the time, but someone's birthday never changes. And I believe this legislation should include an update to D C's ballot access petitions, namely, requiring voters to enter their birth date. And this could really help make circulating petitions easier for circulators, campaigns, and the Board of Elections. Currently, the Board of Elections doesn't have an electronic petition circulator application. They used to have a vendor that provided an application called E-Sign, but from what I am told, they do not work with the vendor any longer. Under the old application, a voter was asked to enter the name, address, signature, and most importantly, they were required to enter their birth date in order for their signature to be counted. The D C Board of Elections already uses voters' birthdays to verify signatures, but this information is not provided to campaigns and could be used to identify voters more easily, especially voters who have common names like John Smith. This bill says circulators are not permitted to make any changes on a petition after a voter has signed their name. But in my experience, voters often sign their names first and then their address. Under this legislation, no changes can be made or help provided by the circulator once the signature is affixed on the petition. This could potentially disenfranchise voters and create even more problems. In Michigan and Alaska, for example, if there was a mistake made on the petition line by the voter, the circulator was legally allowed to make clarifying edits and write their initials next to the edit, which is how most legal documents work. When I engage voters, I hand them the clipboard with the petition and pen, point to the address box, then the signature box, remind them to write their full name in the largest block... box, legibly, and tell them today's date. After they fill this information out, I read it back to them before they walk away. Under this legislation, if a voter has bad handwriting, which many do, and their seven and their address looks like a one, or they write their nickname instead of their full name, that signature could get thrown out. This legislation requires the voter to complete their entire signature again if a mistake is made, when initials would serve the same purpose. Moreover, it is simply unfair to disqualify a voter who signed the petition just because they moved and mistakenly didn't update their voter address in the system. Pre-COVID, voters were required to vote at the precinct closest to their home. Now voters can vote anywhere in the district, and because of this, voters often fail to update their address when they move. Sometimes, it's not a mistake on the voter's end. For instance, when I was at the D C Board of Elections back in April to file for a new ballot initiative, I had filled out all the required paperwork, and I remember one form asked for my voter address. I moved back in December and absolutely updated my address with the D C Board of Elections on their website. Yet, when the folks at the Board of Elections ran my registration, it still had me registered at my old residence. And it is a ridiculous punishment, in my opinion, to throw someone's signature out because of this. People make mistakes, and so does the Board of Elections. I then was told that I needed to update my address on the spot, so they brought me a registration form. I filled it out right in front of them with my new address. And more than two months later, I still haven't received my voter card in the mail. That's a big issue. Had I signed a ballot access petition that day, my signature could have been thrown out. But if the birthday was required on the petition, my address change would not have been an issue. Finally, the D C Board of Elections has a unique identifier that's associated with every voter's record. When the voter changes their name or their address, that identifier stays the same. And a voter that has the same name as another voter, for example, John Smith, no campaign is notified which John Smith changed their voter information. However, the D C Board of Elections with the unique identifier does have this information. A decade ago, the D C Board of Elections provided campaigns with the unique identifier, which ensured that changes to the names and addresses of voters were shared with campaigns. I believe we can work together to create a fair system for all involved. We need to stop putting form over function and uphold the voter's intent. We have to be willing to change things that are broken, and this legislation seeks to do this, but I believe more changes need to be made. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Furnish. Mr. Idinger?
Thank you for having me here. My name is pronounced Idinger. There's no L in there. Sometimes people mistake that I for an L. It's Idinger. Adam Idinger. I've lived in D C now for 33 years. And I'm speaking off the cuff today because the last three speakers pretty much said everything I want to say about this legislation. I support the effort to create this legislation. I support clarification. But we should just basically overhaul the way we collect signatures to prove that someone has enough support to be on the ballot or to prove that a ballot initiative has enough support to be on the ballot. I mean, isn't that what this is all about? Is to prove that enough residents think that you should be on the ballot or this issue should be on the ballot. Now, what just happened with Initiative 83 was a real eye-opener for me because I've backed multiple ballot initiatives since 2014, when I was the proposer of Initiative 71 that legalized personal possession and home cultivation of cannabis. And on that initiative, you know, I didn't know a lot. I started off as like a regular citizen and had never done a ballot initiative before, and I had to learn the system. I went to the Board of Elections, and I spoke to the registrar of voters, and I got advice. And we were told then that you could make corrections to anything but the signature field. And 10 years later, I'm, you know, being fined for doing this, and it was kind of a shock. So I appreciate that you're clarifying the law, and I appreciate what was written at the introduction of the statute, a proposed statute, is that you are saying that actually, this was never really formally outlawed to make corrections. And when I... for those who've criticized us for months now, the people in this campaign who put their blood, sweat, and tears to get the consent of the voters to put something on the ballot, which they then voted and passed and should still be funded. You know, I want to say to those folks, the people who signed Initiative 83 who were disqualified, the over 4,000 lines that were disqualified because there was correction tape, that it clarified maybe a street number or had replaced the address entirely, so it had the right address for that person, so their signature were counted, those were real district residents who signed. Those were not fraudulent or forged. Those were real people. And the point is, is as Chris just said, is not to put form over function here. And the function of this... of these ballot initiatives, the function of getting people to sign, that function is to prove there's public support. And you will be able to prove public support more easily if you go to a birthday-based system where you have a name and birthday. You know, I go to the dentist. They want my birthday. I go to the hospital, G W, they want... they want my birthday every time. I have to give my birthday a lot to prove who I am when it has to do with something official like a medical issue. And voting is in that same bar, where you're going to have a high bar of privacy and a high bar of confirmation that this is really the person that is supposed to get this medication. When I go to C V S, I got to give my birthday. You really need to amend this legislation, Councilwoman. I'm begging you, actually. And I begged you last week to fund Initiative 83, and now I'm begging you to do the right thing here and to make this a fair system that's built for the 21st century, not the 20th. You know, this system that we're working with now was built for a paper-based world. We're now living in a digital world, obviously. And yes, the Board of Elections needs more funding to update its digital assets in all... in all ways. I mean, you could write into this legislation right now that we're going to actually let people sign initiatives online. I don't see why a voter shouldn't be able to log in to a portal at D C B O E and be able to sign a petition by offering their birthday and their name and maybe having some other security measure that you can only do online, but to offer that so people can sign a petition through their phone, so campaigns can announce they're having an initiative, and they can share the link, and people can just sign. Like, we signed a million petitions that have no, like, enforceability. But here's where we actually sign petitions where it actually matters to put people on the ballot. It matters to, you know, to put an issue on the ballot, and we're not offering people a way to sign digitally? Why is that? Like, why are... why are we holding back on direct democracy? Why are we holding back? The only explanation here is that people don't want democracy who are in power, and they don't want more democracy. That's the only explanation I can think of that we haven't updated our election system to be on par with going to the doctor or going, you know, to do a million other things we have to do. I mean, talk about banking. I mean, we do so much online already, and we have no qualm about handing over information. So the one... the one pushback I've heard, and I'll wrap up in just a sec, is that the pushback is that, you know, people don't want to give their birthday. And I say, people don't want to give their address, okay? Like, asking someone for their address is way more invasive than asking for a birthday because you're basically saying that person knows where you live now. And, you know, some people do sign petitions and give false information on purpose because they don't want you to have their address, but they do want to sign the measure. You know, so we're always going to have some people who do that, no matter what we use to confirm the person's identity. Until we're using, you know, fingerprints or something to confirm someone's identity, we're always going to have some people that give false information. So that's a red herring. So they're going to say like, oh, you know, well, we already have that. We already have people giving us the wrong address on purpose because they don't want us to know where they live, and we're going to have people who don't give us their real birthday because they don't want us to know how old they are, or they feel that you're going to steal that information. I think there should be strong penalties for people who steal this information. That's another thing. It should be added to the bill. Like, if people are misusing voter data, and I think we should clarify what voter data can be used for. And I think it should also be clarified that campaigns get voter data, but they have to sign special documentation that they're not going to use it for other purposes than maybe confirming that they have enough signatures to put something on the ballot. And I think every campaign, you know, worries, do they have enough signatures? And there is, as Chris Furnish noted, there's a lot of really valid signers that are being disqualified because we're using an antiquated system, a paper-based system. Anyway, I hope you have some questions for us, Councilwoman. We're here to speak openly. I know you had a roundtable, and you spent a long time talking about what happened with 83, and I don't think, you know, and many of the 83 team... I don't think any of the 83 team participated in that because it wasn't a real hearing. But, you know, we're here. We're making ourselves available. We're taking time out of our day, and I really hope you'll take this... this birthday. And I don't think you should do both. I know, I think Anke maybe said you should do address and birthday. I think it should just be birthday, and I think that's asking for too much information and too much time will be taken. Maybe if we have it online, you can ask for more information. But yeah, online signing and change the system, that's what's needed so it's a more fair system. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony and the testimony of this panel. I think I was able to record your thoughts, and hopefully, we will make sure that your thoughts are reflected in the final draft of this legislation. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. I appreciate it and am very anxious to get this piece of legislation moving forward so that my colleagues will have an opportunity to also express support. So thank you very much. I'm now going to turn to Mr. Brennan, who somehow made his way into the building. And we were thankful that you're here, but we know that there are some difficulties with accessing the building. So thank you very much for being here, Mr. Brennan. So thank you very much for being here, Mr. Brennan. Robert Brennan, yes.
Greetings and salutations, Madam Chair. I strongly support Bill 26-0233, Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. And while I'm here, I would also like to express my support for the Initiative Amendment Act of 2025 that was discussed earlier by the committee. Let me say that the lessons, if the lessons learned or experience comes of fraudulent circulation of I-83 are not corrected, then the people of the District of Columbia will face fraudulent initiatives in the future. Let me say clearly that the signer of the petition is not the one committing the fraud. It's the circulators of the petition who alter the information provided by the signer. That is where the fraud is, not in the hands of the voter, but at the hands of the petition circulators. And we need to be very careful about how we push measures before the people of the District of Columbia. The people of District of Columbia want and have a right to participate through initiative measures, but they need to be told the truth. The initiatives that are presented need to be accurate and complete and not purposely designed to create, to misinform the voter. The premise of I-83, since we're on I-83 and not so much the specific bill itself, was worded to present an idea to count all votes. All votes legally cast are counted in the District of Columbia. Let that be the main issue. And I think that those of us who are involved in democracy should also be involved in being truthful. Let me say the issue of whether or not where I live at present is not related to where I vote in the District of Columbia, since I can live anywhere and vote anywhere. So my address is not the issue on voting. The issue is the signing of the petition, and that is the point. Let me add that recent events, I must divert just a little bit, but it's related to voter and initiative integrity by petition circulators. Next week, the Committee is hold, will hold hearings on the budget, and over 200 people have signed up to testify. They want their voice to be heard, and they want to feel that they can speak truth to power. They profess, while they profess an advocacy for diversity, equity, and inclusion, they themselves as organizations and some instances as individuals resist diversity of thought and equity of ideas and inclusion of other people. There is a bounding intellectual arrogance they feel by putting words like "free" and "democracy" in their organization's name and on T-shirts that they alone have been blessed to speak on justice for people. Institutional racism comes from many platforms. Matthew 7:15 says, "Beware of false prophets, which come to you in sheep's clothing, but inwardly they are ravening wolves." I have come to learn that some liberals and progressives are just as dangerous to black people as are MAGA conservatives and evangelical Christians. They all want to tell black people what to do, how to think. But as for me, I was born free of a freak black woman who taught me how to read, to think, to be a man, and to stand up to bullies. Initiative petitioners should not be intimidating to the voter, and we need to be sure that our processes do not manufacture misinformation to support their goals. Like I said earlier, my name is Robert Benson Brennan. My name is not Peter or Judas, and I proclaim my love for Jesus and for the people of the District of Columbia, and I can speak for myself. I, this initiative will greatly improve the processes for collecting initiatives, and those who come in support of this initiative now, after having violated and committed fraud in the previous circulation of I-83, you know, are basically admitting that what they did was wrong and recognize what they did was wrong and that the writing of the petitions need to be clear for the public. You know, we cannot use, you know, we need, and those, let me say this. Those of us who are equally championing service and commitments to the people of District of Columbia and feel it's necessary to speak against the proposed budget, I'm not carrying water for Mayor Bowser, but we must be as equally vigorous in our opposition to the budget that was proposed by Donald Trump and Mike Johnson that put the district in the position of having to make the difficult choices of what to fund. That's critical, you know? If we're going to march and hold press conferences in front of the Wilson Building to go up to protest against the budget and the actions of the council, we also need to march and hold press conferences in front of the White House and on Capitol Hill on a regular basis to say, "Do not sample on the rights of the people of the District of Columbia." We need to be equally vigorous, otherwise we'd just be intellectually dishonest. I thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Our next witness is Deidra Brown from Vote No on Initiative 83, and then followed by Brian Sturge, ANC 68F, and followed by Ms. Gabby Frazier from the Metropolitan Women's Democratic Club. And so we'll now hear from Ms. Deidra Brown.
Good afternoon. My name is Deidra Brown. I'm a third-generation native Washingtonian, a small business owner, and the chair of Vote No on Initiative 83. As an advocate for election integrity and voter protection, I'm here today to testify in strong support of Bill 26233, the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. This legislation addresses a serious gap in our current election laws by prohibiting anyone from altering the information provided by a petition signer after the signer has affixed their signature, except in a rare case where the signer explicitly requests assistance before signing. This may seem like a technical fix, but goes to the heart of public trust in our electoral system. Petitions are not just pieces of paper, but legal instruments through which voters exercise direct democratic rights. The ability to nominate candidates, propose initiatives, or recall elected officials must be protected by clear and forceful standards that guard against tampering and manipulation. Some have argued today that using whiteout or altering a signer's information, such as correcting the address, is a harmless effort to clarify voter intent. But let me be clear, the only valid expression of voter intent is what the voter writes themselves. Once a voter has provided information on a petition sheet, no one, not the circulator, not a campaign staffer, not a well-meaning volunteer, should alter a single letter of the voter's information. Allowing edits after the fact is an attempt, in an attempt to match the voter rolls with the voter's information, invites fraud. It undermines both the integrity of the process and accountability of the signer. If a voter makes an error, the appropriate response is to have them fill out a new line, not for someone else to rewrite their name, address, or date of signing. That is a standard we should be able to agree on if we truly care about ballot integrity. Some have also suggested that voters should be allowed to provide their birthday instead of their address when signing petition, but this undermines the core purpose of the address requirement, verifying that the signer is actually a registered voter in the District of Columbia and determining where they are registered. Address information is essential to confirm not only voter eligibility, but also whether the signer resides in an appropriate ward for certain races and ballot initiatives. As a reminder, ballot initiatives require that you receive a certain number of petition signatures, not just citywide, but from each ward. Birthdays alone do not provide this critical verification. Let's be honest, this push to replace addresses with birthdays is not about protecting voter intent, it's about making the process easier for manipulation so certain groups can more easily push their agendas onto the ballot without proper scrutiny. The address requirement is not arbitrary, it is a fundamental right to protecting the integrity of the petition process. Another argument we've heard is that other states have different standards and that it should be acceptable for petitioners or circulators to make corrections and simply initial them, arguing that this is similar to how changes are made on legal documents. But this comparison is both inaccurate and misleading. As a title company owner, I deal with contracts and legal documents on a daily basis, and let me be clear, only the original signer to a legal document has the authority to make a change and initial it. A third party cannot legally alter a contract, affidavit, or any binding document and then initially on someone else's behalf without their consent or knowledge, such as when a circulator has changed an address after the fact to match the voter rolls. Doing so or rendering that document invalid or worse, fraudulent. The same principle must apply here. A petition is a legal instrument representing the will of individual voters. That will must be expressed in their own hand, not retroactively edited or corrected by someone else under the guise of efficiency or convenience. The fact that other states may be more permissive should not justify weakening protections in the district. We should be aiming for the highest standard of integrity, not the lowest common denominator. It is both shocking and appalling that some today on the record have openly admitted to using whiteout on past initiative measures, stating that this was routine and that this was routine, and that admission alone underscores why this legislation is not only necessary but urgently overdue. Bill 26233 provides much needed clarity, ensures that voter submitted information remains untouched unless the signer requests help before signing. It requires circulators to affirm on the oath that they have not altered any signer information. It gives both the D.C. Board of Elections and the public a consistent, enforceable standard for evaluating petition authenticity. Although the Initiative 83 proponents want to make it about them, let's be clear, Initiative 83 is what has brought this fraudulent practice to life, but this is bigger than Initiative 83. The same team of people who admitted today to using a practice with other measures is now proposing a new measure that would go before district voters. This bill is about stopping this practice of altering voter information and by doing so, safeguarding the basic democratic function. There is no valid justification for altering what a voter has written, and with this bill, we align the law with that reality. Councilmember Bonds, I thank you and your colleagues for introducing this bill. I urge the council to move swiftly to pass it into law. The public deserves a petition process that is consistent, transparent, and above all, trustworthy. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Brown. And now we have, we have Brian's. Okay, Brian Sturge?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again in front of this committee. My name is Brian Streggy. I'm a Ward Eight resident, and I'm the chair of ANC 68F. I'm here today to testify in support of your bill, the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act, and to make a few suggestions that I hope you'll find useful and consider adding to the bill. Just a little bit more background on myself. I've seen our petitioning process from all sides. I've collected signatures from my own ANC campaigns twice. I've collected signatures for Initiative 83, and I've also submitted seven nominating petition challenges. Also, I was one of two watchers for the Yes on 83 campaign, where I saw the petition verification process firsthand at the Board of Elections. I want a fair and clear process for all sides so that when that process is complete, everyone can feel that they have their due process. That way, the outcome, even if not liked by all sides, is accepted by all sides. So first, let's talk about this bill as it's written right now. The overall thrust of the bill seems to be this: once the signer of a petition actually signs the sheet, the signature field, the information on all the other fields, such as the name or the address, would become essentially locked in and then cannot be changed by the circulator or anyone other than the signer. To be blunt, that seems perfectly fair to me. Petition signers should be able to leave the circulator-signer interaction, feeling that the information that they provide on the sheet is what will be provided to the Board of Elections. I continue to believe that no petition signer would ever write their address incorrectly on purpose, but it's better to have a very clear, hard-and-fast rule about this. Now, I'd like to talk about something that this bill does not do. There's been a lot of discussion about whiteout or correction tape on petition sheets and whether or not it should be allowed. I think the belief is out there that this bill would prevent whiteout from being used on petitions at all, since no modifications can be made after the signature is written. Realistically, that's mostly true, but this bill as written does still allow whiteout, or at the very least, it's silent on the issue. I can envision a scenario where a circulator has a correction tape tool with them while out circulating. They're very small little tools with white tape strips. They're not a messy liquid substance that you might be thinking of. Under this bill, it seems to me that whiteout could still be allowed if the circulator is still in the presence of the signer. I've done a lot of thinking about this, and I've arrived at the conclusion that some others have, that this bill should probably just go all the way and explicitly ban the use of whiteout. And let me tell you why. While I was a watcher for the Yes on 83 campaign last July, I observed that the BOE staff held each sheet with correction tape on it up to a light to determine what was behind it and whether information was changed, in which case, signature was thrown out, or whether it was something more minor, like a correction of handwriting, in which case, the signature was potentially counted. Regardless of your opinion on that decision, this slowed things down quite a bit. For an initiative, we're talking about thousands of petition sheets. Holding them up to the light is extremely impractical. I also heard some complaints that the correction tape was jamming up their scanners. Another example of why I think whiteout should not be used comes from my recent experience as a petition challenger. When I walked over to the BOE back in April and requested the petition sheets to look through, I was emailed scans. I was able to see in one spot that correction tape was used, but only because it was crooked and crossed out one of the lines on the form. There could have been many more that I would never have seen from the scans alone. The bottom line for me is I think that we all need to be operating on the same sheet of music, and realistically, challengers and BOE staff are going to be looking at these petition sheets on computer screens. To echo what Adam Idinger said earlier, we're now living in a digital world. I believe the scans should show you everything, and with correction tape, they don't. So I think we could save ourselves from future headaches by simply banning it explicitly and establishing some other mechanism for corrections, maybe a cross-out and an initial using pen only. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit here about what I would call unwritten rules in our petitioning process. You might ask yourself why a circulator would ever feel the need to use correction tape or even modify at all any information that was written by a signer. If you want to think the worst, your mind might immediately jump to fraud. I can tell you that as a circulator, there's a fear, a paranoia, that the BOE will be overly nitpicky, and that bad handwriting or a missing quadrant or a missing year on a date is going to invalidate your signature. And I think it would help to have a much more thorough and exhaustive list, particularly relating to addresses, of what will and will not be accepted by BOE. Maybe this is more discussion for the regs than the code, but let me give you an example. When I pulled my own nominating petitions for my second run as ANC commissioner, I spoke with a BOE staff member who helped me fill out the paperwork, and I had a question for him. I live in Navy Yard, so I wanted to know whether or not apartment numbers were required in the address field on the petition for constituents who live in apartments. The BOE staff member told me that if no apartment number is listed on the petition, the signature will still count if the rest of the address matches. But he also told me that if an apartment number is listed on the petition and it's a mismatch, the signature will not count, even if the rest of the address matches. Let me state my opinion here very clearly. If that is indeed the policy, that actually needs to be written down somewhere. There can't be unwritten rules that may change over time. They should potentially be in this bill. They should potentially be in this bill, or at the very least, the regulations. Anyway, to conclude, I do support this bill, and I hope you'll consider some of the suggestions I've mentioned today, and I would be happy to work with your office on this if that's at all helpful. I feel like I've seen this process from all angles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Sturgis. Now we'll hear from, okay, Gabby Fraser, she is on. Okay, thank you. Ms. Fraser, could you unmute yourself? All right, excellent, thank you.
May I begin?
Yes, yes, go right ahead. We hear you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Councilmember Bonds, and Committee members of the Executive Administration and Labor Committee. My name is Gabby L. Fraser, and I am the President of the Metropolitan Women's Democratic Club and Award Seven resident. I want to thank you and your colleagues, Councilmember McDuffie and Fruman, for introducing the Petition Administration Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. I am 100% in favor of this proposed legislation. The purpose of whiteout is to correct, amend, or change. Once a voter signs a petition, the circulator nor anyone else associated with the petition has the authority or the right to change it. Understanding that in order for a signature on a petition or initiative to be actually counted, the voter's name and address has to match the BOE voter database. However, if it doesn't match, the signature doesn't count. It's really quite that simple. Using whiteout or any other alteration to obscure the original entry is compromising the integrity of the voter's signature and should result in disqualification of the voter's signature or the entire petition page. Petitions are considered legal documents, submitted in their original unaltered form, and should accurately reflect the intent and exact handwriting input of the signature after working on political campaigns. For over, we were gathering signatures. If an error was made, we would either ask the signer to cross it out and put their initials beside it, or just re-sign on another line. We never, ever considered using it on a petition, and until I-83, I never saw it used on a petition. I, along with Deidre Brown, Chair of the Vote No Committee, served as witnesses to the counting of the I-83 petition sheets. What we witnessed was truly unbelievable. We noticed that there were hundreds, if not thousands, of pages where whiteout had been used throughout the entire batch of petitions. When we brought this to the attention of employees and BOE management, we were given varied responses, such as, we were told whiteout was okay, or, we hold the sheet up to the light to see what was under the whiteout. That is absurd. They allowed employees to individually and independently determine what the intent of the signer could possibly have been. Quite frankly, some of the employees seemed scared to challenge the validity of some of the signatures. We also heard the whiteout was correcting addresses such as changing Mass. to Massachusetts Avenue or Penn. to Pennsylvania Avenue. These are both very well-known abbreviations for streets in D.C., quite frankly, around the country. In conclusion, altering any information on the petition in any way, whether it's to correct a mistake, change a name, fix an address, or modify a date, should be considered tampering or fraud, and should invalidate or disqualify the voter's signature, and in my opinion, the entire petition sheet. Any changes to a voter's information after they have signed negates the legitimacy of their intent. A circulator is responsible for witnessing signatures, not editing the voter's information to match the BOE voter database. I'm available for questions. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Councilmember Bonds.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Chairwoman Fraser. Thank you. We'll now hear from Dorothy Brazil, I believe she is on. Ms. Brazil, we're ready for your testimony.
Can you hear me?
We can now, yes, thank you. Go right ahead.
I am Dorothy Brazil, Executive Director of D.C. Watch. Before I get into the substance of my testimony, I want to indicate that for nearly 20 years or more, I have been a student and a follower of the work of the Board of Elections. To that end, I myself, working with colleagues in the district, have challenged numerous petitions that have been submitted for various measures. The two most prominently known are the petitions Mayor Anthony Williams submitted for his reelection campaign that had thousands of fraudulent signatures. And the other one is the initiative measure for the Video Lottery Terminal Initiative, again, that had fraudulent signatures. I say that to say that I also attend the monthly meeting of the Board of Elections, which is solely held virtually now. With that said, with regard to this legislation, I want you to know that when the issue arose, I spent nearly a week at the Law Library of the Library of Congress, looking and researching the election laws of other jurisdictions and states as regards whether or not the issue of whiteout was addressed in their laws, as well as the tampering with information in the signature box on a petition. Let me just give one example of what I found. The California Code of Regulations, Section 20930 specifically states, under the section dealing with petition signatures, the following: A petition signature shall not be included in a raw count, and the root signature shall not be subject to signature verification if (1) a line appears through the name, address, and signature of the signer; (2) correction tape or correction fluid is used to cross out the signer's information, and new information is written on top of it or around it. There are numerous examples of such legislation being on the books throughout the United States. Moreover, when I first learned in July that there was whiteout, or correction tape, as it is now being referred to, used on the I-83 petitions, I could not believe it. In all the years that I have followed, monitored, and personally reviewed petitions, such use has never been permitted. So for the I-83 people to say, "Well, we've been doing this since 2014, and the register of voters said it was okay," that was a private conversation that no one else knew about. No one else knew about. I would like to add one other thing. I was reluctant to testify today, because quite frankly, Ms. Bonds, I am frustrated. I am frustrated that nothing seems to happen, that you and your staff are aware of the problems and the issues at the Board of Elections, but nothing happens. You've not called for an investigation of why in March of last year, the initiative people told the Board of Elections they intended to use whiteout. And still, they were allowed to submit their petitions in July. At the August certification of the initiative, the Board of Elections gave passing reference to an allegation of whiteout, and it took nearly nine months for the Board of Elections to actually launch an investigation. And I am convinced that only occurred because people raised holy hell at the performance hearing you held at the beginning of this year. This bill is not perfect. This bill has several flaws. I am also concerned about the memorandum that accompanies the bill. It inaccurately implies that there was nothing in the books, no law or regulation that said you could not manipulate, falsify, correct, whatever term you want to use, a signature, an address, a date on a petition. As I said, I and a number of other people are looking. We want to understand what's going on with you, Ms. Bonds, and your committee. We want to understand what's going on with the council. This cannot continue. The most sacred, fundamental institution of the District of Columbia, and indeed, in your own self-interest, you should be concerned when people come to you and say, "There's something wrong at the Board of Elections." But there's this Manana philosophy, "Let's go on." I think it's also outrageous, given the times we live in, that the I-83 people would suggest, "Oh, the problem can be solved by people giving their birthday." If you think people don't want to give their address, do you think that they want to give an anonymous person on the street with a clipboard their birthday? Do you really think that? Or is that something they're just saying now because they need to get beyond all the fallout that has occurred regarding I-83? Ms. Bonds, I think, and I hope, that this is one time you step up the plate. You have known for over a year, because I and other people have brought it to your attention, about a myriad of problems at the Board of Elections. Today, nothing has been done. It cannot continue. And I hope, as Mr. Brandon has suggested, that we clean our own house. And if it is a matter of a staffer, a register, a voter over at the Board of Elections having given privileged or special instructions to Mr. Idinger and his crew, that person needs to be fired and cited for corrupt election practices. None of us knew. None of us knew that whiteout or correcting tape was being used on petitions. When I got the call at home, I said, "You gotta be mistaken. Can't be." But it was. Ms. Bonds, I'm asking you. I'm on my knees begging you to step up to the plate and have you and your 10-member staff do something. If you don't want to take my word, have them spend a day or two at the Law Library, looking at what other jurisdictions do to protect the integrity of the election process, the petitions. As Gabby Fraser has said, and Deidre Brown has said, in essence, the petition is a contract which the Board of Elections allows a candidate or a committee to circulate in the community. The one requirement is, when they sign that affidavit, is that they assure the board that it was done in keeping with district law and regulations. Not that someone, when they got back to Mr. Idinger's office, used whiteout or correcting tape. No. We need to have assurances that this will not happen. And just like in any contract, I believe that the petition is a form of contract, and you do not allow a party to willy-nilly make corrections. You either cross it out and do it over, or you don't include it at all. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And I believe our final public witness is Mr. Miguel Durano.
I think he might need to be elevated to panelist. Hello.
You're on, Miguel. Can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Yes, please give us your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to appear today. My name is Miguel Trindade Duramo. I have served as a member of the Steering Committee for the Initiative 83 campaign. I'm glad to be here today to speak in favor of greater clarity in the petitioning process. The bill under consideration is a strong step, I support it, but it cannot be the only step we take to update the legal architecture around ballot access. This bill prohibits the alteration of signer information on a petition after signature. This is a common sense safeguard. However, I worry that the change proposed by this bill will instill a presumption that any visible correction on a petition sheet is suspect. Voters routinely make errors on petitions, we all know that, and they are allowed to correct their errors before affixing their signatures. I do not want their scratchouts to be interpreted during review at the Board of Elections as post facto changes by a circulator. An easy fix would be to prescribe that any scratchouts on the petition sheet be accompanied by the initials, either of the signer or of the circulator, and stipulate that such corrections be performed only before the signature is affixed. I'm glad that Ms. Furnish suggested the same improvement on a previous panel. There are other improvements that can accompany and complement this bill. Since this bill establishes the act of affixing a signature as definitive, in effect, locking the petition line to any further alterations or corrections, the petition form itself should be designed to reflect that legal reality. The current design of the petition has the signature field at left. Logically, this prompts the signer to affix a signature early in the process of filling out the line rather than at the end. The council and the board should work together urgently to redesign the form to place the signature field at bottom right, distinguishing it from the other fields and making clear its final and irrevocable role. I believe that Senator Jane was smart to also propose that the petition form include additional fields for identity resolution, such as date of birth. Another way to identify, to verify identity would be to allow a voter to list their driver's license number, which of course is unique to the individual, generally does not change over time, and already exists in the voter registration records of the Board of Elections. I spent years working as an intelligence analyst in the federal government. I spent a lot of time on identity resolution, confirming that the individual described in one piece of information was in fact the same individual referred to in another piece of information. This is an essential act. Misattributing information can have disastrous consequences. In my former career, I would not have confirmed an identity match based only on a name and an address. Adding more points of data to corroborate identity when the address is illegible or otherwise imperfect will yield a system that is more flexible, more inclusive, and crucially more secure. I also want to take a moment to underscore what my colleague, Mr. Streggy, has said about unwritten rules. His example that a missing apartment number on a petition is acceptable, but an incorrect apartment number is lethal, perfectly illustrates the patchwork of informal, unwritten, word-of-mouth regulations that the Board of Elections must cease to engage in. The Board and this council must work together to clarify and codify the standards that are to be enforced. As you know, members of our campaign agreed to pay a fine because of a purported change in the standards that the Board of Elections applies to accepting or rejecting signatures. As I have said previously before this committee, I believe that my colleagues accepted a very unfortunate series of events with grace. I commend them for that. But it is not fair for the Board to change practice without following standard administrative procedures such as promulgating a regulation. In fact, the current regulation around signature validity remains in place and reflects no such change in standards. As things currently stand, the Board risks acting arbitrarily and capriciously. Political candidates and initiative or referendum campaigns cannot reasonably comply if they don't know what the standard is from one day to the next. This is a basic principle of administrative law. It is neither theoretical nor abstract. The district government's failure to uphold that principle has caused real detriment to real people. As this bill's introductory letter states, "Nothing in the current law addresses the legality of alterations or changes made to information added by a petition signer to the petition form." I believe this bill is a reasonable and fair way to clear up that particular gray area, but only one step of several that need to be taken to remedy gaps in existing statute and regulation. I appreciate your I appreciate your time here today.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you to all of our witnesses. I believe that each of you has brought clarity to the intent of this piece of legislation, and I appreciate your input on it, and I especially appreciate the fact that we're all saying the same thing, and that is that we have to have a change, a process that is dependable, a process that shows uniformity in what is the intent of having petitions circulated in the District of Columbia and to give an issue, an individual access to our ballot. So I appreciate that very much.
Madam Chair, I want to add a recommendation that I just came up with, a suggestion. The Board of Elections entered into a consent with the petition signers, and they were fined. The regulation currently states that if there is fraudulence in the petition, that the OAG shall investigate. I would recommend and add that the Board of Elections, if it finds it necessary to enter into a consent with petition circulators, and they are fined, that the OAG should be notified, and the Board of Elections should refer that agreement to the Attorney General for his consideration for criminal prosecution. The Board of Elections should not be able to give a pass for criminality. If someone violates the law and the Board of Elections enters an agreement with them and they issue a fine, that should not be administrative pardon for future prosecution from the DC Attorney General, who is authorized to prosecute fraudulent election practices.
Mr. Brandon, thank you very much. I must say to all of our witnesses, there were many other circumstances that we are aware of as it relates to the Board that have been found to be of concern. And one of the main reasons this legislation was developed is that it seemed extremely egregious, directly affecting the public, and we wanted to make sure that looking at the petitioning process was first and foremost. But there are concerns about the challenge process. There are concerns about a few other areas of regulations that we will be examining. And, you know, I'm sorry, it takes a while to do this work, but it does. And we will continue. And the more we hear from the public about real issues, the more we are able to get on top of issues, and the faster we're able to get on top of them. But we cannot get on an issue if we hear from one person. It's important to hear from voices in community. And so, thank you very much.
As I said, there is no national identification in the United States. Even in District of Columbia, a driver's license or state issued ID is not required in the District of Columbia. So say that a person's voter registration can be validated by a driver's license, simply you have basically taken away the rights of certain people who don't have a driver's license in the District of Columbia from being able to vote. If you're requiring a voter a driver's license in order to sign a petition or to register to vote, that's not happening in District of Columbia.
Well, again, you're correct. And there are other, there are a number of things that are ideas that have been projected today, which this committee has the capacity to not only hear, but to consider. And so I want to thank everyone for your testimony. I think your comments speak for themselves, and it will, to the best of our ability, we'll try to make sure that this bill reflects in a holistic way the many suggestions, ideas that have been expounded on, and with us recognizing that the legislation as currently drafted has the intention to capture all of your concerns. And so, thank you. And with that said, all right, the time is now, we're closing the hearing with, the time is now 12:55 PM on Friday, June 13, 2027. Thank you all very, very much, and thanks to my staff, those who are here, and those that assisted in this whole process.